So today is January 27th and it is 6:10 and I am calling to order the City Council and Planning Commission's special joint virtual meeting. City Clerk, can I please get a roll call?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Alejandra Avila. Here. Councilmember Daniel Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia. Councilmember Paul C. Hernandez.
Present.
Should I roll call for the Planning Commission or is someone else gonna do that?
Yes, Marlene, if you could.
Okay, yeah. Chair Christopher Sines.
Present.
Vice Chair Edwin Borquez.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Edith Flores. Planning Commissioner Christopher Garrido.
Present.
Thank you.
Great, thank you City Clerk and I believe Councilmember Garcia is having some technical difficulties, so I will make a motion to excuse her, I'm sure she will be late, can I get a second?
Good.
Great, any objections? No? Alright, and at this point we move on to the open session and I believe there's a Housing Element Update presented by MIG.
Yes, so thank you Mayor, City Council, Planning Commission staff, and all attendees for this study session. I want to welcome our Housing Element Consultants Genevieve Shero and Roxanne Bertrand, who are assisting the city with the Housing Element Update, which many cities throughout California are undergoing at this moment and throughout the year as we head towards October for an approval. Just a couple logistical things I want to go over as before we begin the presentation with, from our Housing Element Consultant. Please feel free during the presentation to submit comments in the chat box and also if you'd like to voice your comments at the end of the presentation, just simply please raise your hand in the chat box feature so that way we can unmute you. Without further ado, I'd like to hand it over to MIG Genevieve Shero.
Thank you Ron and good evening Mayor, Councilmembers, Plan Commission, and Representatives of the public and thank you for having us here tonight. Tonight, we are here to talk about the Focus General Plan Amendment that is currently underway. The majority of the meeting is going to focus on the Housing Element component, but just wanted to touch on the other items that are also part of the project. My colleague Roxanne is also going to provide some information on the public engagement process and what we've heard so far from the public. And then we'd like to be available for any questions that you might have and also provide a venue for additional comments from the public about any housing concerns that they have and also get some direction from the City Council and the Planning Commission about particular housing policies that you would like to see us consider in the Housing Element Update. So just a brief overview of the general plan to get everyone started on the same page. The general plan's really, sorry, skipped forward a little too fast. The general plan is a guiding document for the community and it's really developed to reflect what the local vision is for the community today and into the future. It's really quite a comprehensive document, it has many required elements ranging from transportation to open space, noise, safety. There's eight required chapters and the Housing Element is one of them. General plans generally look out for about the next 15 to 25 years, although Housing Elements are a little different and they are required to be looked at on an eight-year update cycle. So the Housing Element is one of those state-required elements or chapters of the general plan, but it's a little bit different than some of the other elements. It's the only element that requires pretty significant review from a state agency. That agency is called the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, you might hear them termed as. We have a little bit of alphabet soup and acronyms in Housing Element speak, so I'll try and keep it as limited as possible. HCD is one of them and you also have probably heard the RENA or RHNA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, so we'll talk about that a little tonight as well. So the Housing Element is also different because it has an eight-year update cycle like I mentioned. So this update cycle for the Southern California region is due to be adopted by October 15th of this year. So if it's adopted on time, the city has an eight-year planning cycle. However, there's a penalty for not adopting on time, which is a four-year update cycle. And without having adopted on time or having an element that the state finds to be in compliance with state law, cities do face the potential for litigation. It's one of the most litigated elements of the general plan and the Attorney General is enforcing with variety of different means to encourage and require cities to comply now with strength in legislation that's come out in the last couple of years. Also, if you don't have a compliant Housing Element, cities become ineligible for grants and there can be future penalties in upcoming Housing Element cycles. So the Housing Element's also a bit unique because while the general plan really is a guiding vision for a community, the Housing Element has a very clear legislative intent that applies to every jurisdiction throughout the state. And that is that the legislature has declared that the availability of housing is of vital statewide importance and that local and the state government have a responsibility to facilitate the improvement and development of housing to address the needs of all economic segments of the community. So the Housing Element when it comes out is, it's a document. It's a document that has usually five main components. It usually starts with an assessment of what the community needs are, looking at demographics, housing market trends, the different needs of special needs groups like seniors, veterans, homeless. It also looks at constraints to housing development. So these can be a variety of different things that just make it a little bit more difficult to actually get housing to be built. And so these can be things that the government can help with, that the city has a say in about how the zoning code is written. That's a significant factor in what we look at because it's something that is owned by the city and the city can make changes about. We also look here at market, environmental, and other different kinds of infrastructure constraints and see if there's anything that the city can do there too to help facilitate the development of housing. The Housing Element also looks at the housing resources that are available. This section also does a sites inventory, looking at where new housing could be located in the jurisdiction. And that is part of that regional housing needs allocation that we'll discuss in a little bit. We also look at what are the available resources to help get that housing built, be it financial or administrative support from the government. The Housing Element's also required by state law to look back at the previous Housing Element and see how well did the city do in meeting all of the goals that were set for the city. Not just construction targets and housing, but what are all the other measures that the Housing Element said that we would do and how well were we able to achieve those? And all those components go together to really the heart of the document, which is the Housing Plan. And this outlines what the city's goals and policies and really importantly, what those action items are to move forward housing policy in the city. So back to that, to that RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, because this is something that a lot of people talk about and can be kind of confusing. This is the acronym for the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. And the RENA is actually, it's actually a number. It's the number of housing units that the state agency, the HCD, the Housing and Community Development Department, has determined are needed on a regional basis. So the state does analysis and projects out how much housing is needed for the next eight years. And then they allocate that out for, and for where we're located, to the Southern California region. And then the Southern California region, the Regional Council of Governments, then allocates that out to each individual jurisdiction with a methodology to determine how much housing each jurisdiction should anticipate needing over the next eight years. So that methodology resulted in a RENA for Baldwin Park of 1996 units to anticipate needing over the next eight years. So each jurisdiction is given a RENA, the methodology is somewhat linked to where transit and jobs are as well as where existing disadvantaged communities live. So here's some examples of some of our neighboring jurisdictions and Arenas that they have been allocated for this term as well. The RENA is also split up into different categories based on income level. So while the Housing Element is about creating housing for all, that means that we're looking at the housing needs of all different economic segments of the community and recognizing that there is a deficit of housing for very low, low, and moderate income households. So because of that, a majority of the RENA is allocated to those different categories. So the sum total of these is 1996 units for the next eight years. So the way the RENA works is it's not a construction obligation, but it is, it is a target, it's a goal that the city has. And the role of the Housing Element and the city is to show that the city's existing policies, the land use, the zoning, and the other programs that the city can put in place can allow for this level of development to occur and can help facilitate that over the next eight years. However, the city's not required to build the units. It is intended that the city puts in place those policies to support the private market, the nonprofit developers, and can support those policies moving forward. So moving forward for the next eight years, the Housing Element must be drafted to show how Baldwin Park will accommodate that RENA of 1996. So the state will look at this section of the Housing Element in kind of a lot of detail and what we'll show is that the RENA can be met with a variety of ways. The first is that there are a number of projects in the pipeline and those can be counted towards that RENA because we're looking at things that are going to be built, receive their certificate of occupancy, be ready to go after this June. We'll also look at potential sites in town, any vacant sites, underutilized sites that could be redeveloped and within existing neighborhoods where there's potential for accessory dwelling units. So just a quick look at some of those projects in the pipeline. There's a, there's a number of projects that will help move forward the city's housing target goals. There are four, five projects that are either in the application process or in the pre-application process where the city is talking to the developers about these projects and they're interested in developing on particular sites. So looking over at near Morgan Park, a proposal for 24 townhomes. Both the ROAM, next phases of construction would provide very low and low-income mod, units for the city. Central Metro Place, also located kind of near City Hall, is another potential project that would provide affordable housing. And then over on the north side of Ramona, on the east side of town, is another potential project that would provide an estimated 90 units of affordable housing as well. So this is great that the city has interest from developers moving forward these projects. And in addition to that, there are accessory dwelling units that we can anticipate seeing developed over the next eight years. Looking back at the city's previous applications for accessory dwelling units, these have increased over the last couple of years significantly. So we're seeing many more of these coming online. And the city is also pursuing a downtown specific plan update, which is currently underway, which will provide additional capacity in town. So looking back on the last six years and where housing has been developed, we had a number of projects early in the, in the planning period that were supporting affordable housing. We had more above moderate housing that came online in the mid-part of the cycle. And it's, it's interesting to note that the projects that are currently in the pipeline are nearly equal to what has been developed in the last six years. So we're seeing some increased interest. So there've been a lot of new laws that have passed at the state level in the last few years that really affect what goes into the Housing Element. And one new requirement is that the city must look at how it can affirmatively further fair housing. And this means that the city needs to show how meaningful actions are being made to move forward and overcome patterns of segregation, address disparities in housing needs and access to opportunities and really promote fair housing choice and just really foster an inclusive community. So we'll be looking at ways that we can address that in the Housing Element. The city does have an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice that was developed last year, that will be a good resource for that. And we'll look at how sites can really be addressed in high-opportunity areas where there's existing transit, parks, and services. So just a little bit of background on some of the existing housing programs that do exist in the city. There, the city has its own housing authority, which is pretty unique, that manages the Housing Choice voucher program formerly known as Section 8. And it also manages 12 units of senior housing. The Baldwin Park Housing Division is another great resource. They administer a number of different funding sources to help support housing needs, including the federal CDBG and home funds as well as CARES Act funds. The Baldwin Park zoning regulations also support some opportunities for incentives through density bonuses that are permitted as well as accessory dwelling units. The city also participated in Measure H, received Measure H funds and is pursuing an inclusionary housing study to look at that for the city. And in addition there, the city participated with Project Home Key, looking with the county to purchase the Motel 6 and convert that to supportive housing for formerly homeless folks. So the city is also including an environmental justice component into the general plan. So this is another requirement that happens, it's triggered by an update to the Housing Element. But the city was really proactive in addressing this and developed a health and sustainability element about six or so years ago. And that element really does address a lot of the things that an environmental justice element would address. But this, so this element, the health and sustainability element, will be updated as part of this process to address all of the key things that the state law requires. So the state law is really looking at communities that bear a disproportionate burden of pollution and health risks. So the screening level to be considered a disadvantaged community is anything higher than 75% when you're compared to the rest of the state. So in Baldwin Park, that is actually everything except the two green census tracts here. So we'll be looking in that environmental justice element at ways that we can really improve the quality of life and health outcomes for folks that are living in areas that are designated as disadvantaged. So that this process will also have a community engagement process, we'll be reaching out to folks who live in the communities and looking at best practices to address pollution burdens and health outcome needs. The update to the Housing Element also triggers an update to the Safety Element. So this is required by state law and the Safety Element will look especially at risks associated with climate change, looking at wildfire hazards, extreme weather events, and flooding. I'm going to turn it over to Roxanne, who's going to look at the input that we've received to date.
Great, thank you. Yes, I'm going to lead us through an overview of public engagement and input to date, highlighting community priorities that we've heard so far. So the public engagement process for this project will span through next fall and there will be additional opportunities for further participation, including another community workshop that will focus on environmental justice and it will have an accompanying survey. And then there will also be another public joint study session and hearings are also planned. Draft documents will be available for public review in late spring, early summer and environmental review adoption hearings will occur next fall. So the city hosted a Housing Element workshop on October 28th of 2020, which was available in English and in Spanish. The group discussed housing challenges and opportunities. They brainstormed some locations to accommodate new housing and discussed how city policies could best address local housing needs. And we did highlight a lot of the details that we went over regarding Housing Element law. So some of the key themes that came out of that workshop were to hire and support local, provide local preference, build more affordable housing, and a desire for supportive housing, streamline the development process, provide flexibility in zoning, and more outreach and education about housing and this Housing Element update process to be green and healthy and address environmental justice. Next slide please, thanks. So we also, the city also provided an online community survey that was available in October and November of 2020 in Spanish and in English. It was advertised online and through social media outlets and participants were asked to rank their priorities related to addressing housing needs, how the city should meet the demand for future housing, and also a handful of demographic questions to help us understand who we were reaching with the survey. So we had 110 respondents total and like I mentioned, we'll have another online survey specifically related to environmental justice as well. So who participated in the survey? Majority of respondents live or work in Baldwin Park. So 82% of respondents live or work and then an additional 11% live and work in Baldwin Park. So 93% of total respondents have, you know, a direct link to the city. 47% of respondents have lived in Baldwin Park for 21 or more years and 78% identified as Hispanic. Next slide please. The majority, 61% of respondents reside in a single-family home, followed by 16% and 10% respectively in apartments and condominiums. And also, so more than, more than half, a majority, either, you know, rent or own, but there is a majority, 44% rent in Baldwin Park. So what we heard, when we asked what types of housing does Baldwin Park need most, respondents ranked single-family homes as their top choice, followed by housing for families and individuals who need supportive services. So we also heard in response to our open-ended questions that residents identified a need for diversity of housing types to accommodate existing residents, more apartments for affordable living. And there were several comments regarding affordability in general, not only for residents but shelters and affordable units for those experiencing homelessness. There was a focus on maintaining and renovating existing housing as opposed to new development, maintaining a small-city feel and sense of community. There were a few comments related to parking and traffic concerns. Residents want the city to consider access to transit when planning for and developing new housing and also to provide assistance and information about housing loans and programs. When asked what the best location in Baldwin Park for new housing was, respondents prioritized anywhere in Baldwin Park as long as impacts the single-family neighborhoods as their top choice. So there are, oh, I'm sorry, so when respondents were asked to speak to current housing challenges in Baldwin Park, they highlighted affordability as their main concern, particularly related to children growing up in Baldwin Park, being able to return and afford to live in the city on their own as adults. And lastly, there are trade-offs, next slide please. There are trade-offs associated with different approaches to providing housing. So when asked what is most important to you, respondents prioritized new housing being spread evenly across the city as their top choice. Next slide. So state law establishes a process for consultation with Native American tribes. This process has been initiated and no requests have been received as of yet. The city will reach out to local affected tribes at key points during the remainder of the process to inform and include their input if it were to arise. We've also received and reviewed a public comment letter from Abundant Housing recommending best practices for the development of the draft Housing Element. These recommendations in general are consistent with the best practices recommended by HCD. And those recommendations include estimating the likelihood of development on particular sites to meet the RENA, using HCD's approved methodology for forecasting future anticipated ADU production, prioritizing affordable housing in high opportunity areas, including those with transit, jobs, schools, and parks, which also helps to address fair housing issues and comply with no net loss requirements. So no net loss means that the city will need to maintain an inventory of housing sites to meet the RENA throughout the planning period. As sites develop, the city will track projections of how many units were anticipated and compare that to actual developments. And if there is a shortfall, additional sites will then need to be identified. Next slide please. So the city will continue to post additional information and communicate with the public regarding opportunities for engagement and comment via the city's website and the city's Facebook page. So thank you for having us here tonight. That was a lot of data and information to cover. So we are available to answer any questions that you might have and would also like to hear from both the public and decision-makers regarding key housing concerns that you'd like to see addressed and also policies to prioritize in the Housing Element draft.
Thank you Genevieve and Roxanne for that thorough presentation. So how we would like to handle the comments is first hear from the public and then after we've heard from the public, we can then go on to the Planning Commission and finally with the City Council. Again, if you have any comments, feel free to put them in the chat box and also simply raise your hand if you'd like to voice any comments or questions regarding the presentation tonight.
Great, thank you Ron and we have a digital whiteboard where we can record some comments. But do we see anyone with hands raised? I don't see anything coming in the chat yet. Roxanne, do you see any hands raised?
I don't.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead Ron, sorry.
Sorry, so if we don't have any comments from the public, we can move forward with the Planning Commission. Sorry about that.
Great, so, thank you. So Planning Commission and City Council members, please do let us know or Mr. Mayor, if you would like to check in with the Planning Commission and see if they have any comments or the City Council has any comments, we're here to answer any questions. We're here to answer any questions.
Yeah, by all means, if, if anybody, I mean, if, if anybody has any questions, you know, they can, they can definitely raise their hand or maybe unmute themselves and just speak it out. I know it's a little bit confusing with Zoom and all these mini screens coming up. But I think somebody did make a comment. I'm not sure if it's related regarding Habitat for Humanity.
Oh, great. Yeah, I'll read this one out loud. San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity would like to see a vigorous emphasis on affordable homeownership production and preservation. We see this as a critical, as critical to meeting the twin goals of enabling people to continue living in Baldwin Park while also enjoying opportunities to build equity and increase economic mobility. So thank you very much for the comment.
Yeah. And then I don't know if, if, if no council members or commissioners have any questions, I can start making comments.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. I, in the presentation, can you tell me, may I have missed how many respondents there were total?
To the survey?
Yes.
Let me go back and check. Roxanne, you might know offhand.
Yep, 110 total.
110. Did you say that when, when the question came up about, you know, having housing, new housing across the city, was it that without impacting the single-family residential neighborhoods? Or did they want to see housing in single-family residential neighborhoods?
So the question that was asked was what are the best locations in Baldwin Park for new housing? And the top-ranked choice was anywhere in Baldwin Park as long as any impact to single-family neighborhoods are minimal.
Oh, minimal. Okay. And I, I would certainly agree with that. And I think that, you know, having, having housing that is compatible with the surrounding area is something that should be a priority in this, in this plan. And I think that, that response feeds into that, right? Because where we have commercial and multifamily housing, then I think that that supports a higher-density type housing. And then where we have single-family homes, I know that our residents have expressed that they would like to preserve the, you know, the integrity to, to whatever extent is available to us right now. Because in the past, there have been subdivisions in a lot of our larger lots. And so, you know, in our neighborhoods, they experience, residents experience like too many cars and things like that, that have often been brought to the council's attention. So I think that that response was very consistent with what I have heard, you know, in speaking with residents over the years. I've been a council member for now 13, going on 14 years. So that's very consistent. And I think it's, I, I would certainly like to see that prioritized in this plan.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and I think, I think the answers are very promising and what the, and what our constituents are favoring, favoring and what they're prioritizing, right? And so I think one of the, one of the main concerns, at least, you know, from, from my point of view and other points of view is, you know, we, we look at downtown as a, as kind of the place to, to densify. By all means, I don't want to create density, you know, in the neighborhood. And, you know, we, by all means, want to keep those alone and, you know, save some, you know, save the, save that deal of a, of a small-town feeling because I think people enjoy that here. But I think, you know, and I don't know if this is the right question or maybe you guys are the right ones to answer it. But, you know, how do we go about, you know, keeping that balance in downtown? I know a lot of people, you know, they want development, they want things. And, and of course, land is finite, right? So I think at some point, we kind of have to prioritize whether we want some sort of development or actual housing, right? So is there, is there any best practices in that or how we go about considering those things?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. And I think, I think this is a good start of, of having those policies in place that, that recognize the desire to maintain and preserve single-family neighborhoods. You know, some of the, the best practice or some of the recommendations from certain groups are to, you know, open up zoning in single-family neighborhoods to allow up to fourplexes. And it sounds like here, that's not something that, that is, is going to be an interested topic. So really looking at where those areas are that make the most sense to provide really high-quality housing, too. So it's, it's about making sure that those design standards are in place. And that's being pursued, especially in your downtown with the update to the TOD downtown-specific plan. So that is, is a great step forward as well. So I think looking at where your design standards and, and expectations are, you know, really look at, at the ability to convey those messages is important. The, the way that existing policy from the state is coming down is to, the, the ability of, of cities to be, to regulate based on neighborhood compatibility is a little constrained because the city doesn't, or the state doesn't want to really limit housing coming in because somebody doesn't like the way that it looks. So it's really important that the city has very clear development standards in place so that applicants understand what the city's expectations are and that the city gets the kinds of development that you're looking to get.
Great. And so, you know, of course, housing is important. And of course, you know, we want to increase housing because we have to, right? There's a, there's a, there's an obvious shortage. But, you know, as, as we develop, and, and I think, again, this is not just my concern, but as we develop, we want to make sure that the development benefits the people that are here, right? We want to make sure that the housing that we build is, is attainable for the people who live here and not at the expense of them. So is there any best practices or, or any ideas when it comes to, you know, working with developers and making sure that these properties are going to be attainable? From what, from what I understand, I think I've seen maybe in other states or in other counties where, you know, they, they put in a, you know, they try to prioritize the type of developers, developers that they work with, maybe nonprofits and of that sort.
Yeah, there's certainly, you could put policies in place to, especially when the city is able to contribute or provide incentives or concessions to those projects, to ask them to put in local preference. So to, to look for their, their residents from local folks, not from out of area. So that's, that's one mechanism. And really just building those relationships with, with the nonprofit developers. I know Baldwin Park staff is great at that and working with a variety of folks to bring them in to look at potential opportunities where they exist around town and make those connections of, you know, property owners that might be interested in selling and those developers that are interested in developing at below-market rates.
Great. And then what about any policies? Is there any, any interesting policies? I know that cities around us have, have pushed for inclusionary housing. And I know that our, I know that our staff is currently looking into it. Is there anything other, is there any other type of policy similar to, to that that we should be considering or looking into?
Sure. Um, yes, inclusionary housing certainly is something that, you know, hundreds of jurisdictions throughout California have in place. The, the way that the housing element law, it's a little bit two-sided because while we recognize that it is a critical way to support affordable housing development, the state also recognizes that it can be a constraint to housing development. So as part of the housing element, we look at, you know, how an inclusionary housing policy could impede potential development if it's not developed in the right way. So, but certainly that is a great best practice. There's a lot of good best practices around looking at how the city can help facilitate housing through removing constraints. The, I've worked with the city of Paso Robles, and they have a Housing Constraints and Opportunities Commission that has really, they've really thought it through of how to reduce fees on certain units to really encourage them to happen there. They have, they had fees on, on roads that they decided they didn't need. So they were able to redo their circulation element to reduce impact fees as one way. They also reduced fees for smaller units based on unit size or linking them to pipe size instead of per unit. And they were really able to drop fees that way. So really thinking critically about how development does happen, ways that you can encourage efficient design that is also achieving the design quality. So looking really carefully at some of these nitpicky things does actually tend to go a long way.
Great. Okay. Do any councilmembers or commissioners have any comments or questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Appreciate that. No. Great comments from, from my colleagues. And I can't, you know, can't wait to hear what my commissioners will say because they live and breathe this on a daily basis. So looking forward to what, you know, their insights. You know, again, thank you very much for the presentation and the staff for, you know, all the, the hard work. You know, I'm looking forward to, you know, continuing to move this forward so we get continued, you know, input from our community even during this pandemic. It's very important for us as, you know, as you're talking about is the future of Baldwin Park and the landscape of what that will look like. One of the concerns, or I could say, excuse me, something first and foremost that I certainly support is multi-use, high-density development in and around. I think you called it the high transit or high-opportunity areas. I, I agree with that certainly around our downtown areas, you know, the transit areas and so forth to make it easier, you know, for commuters and so forth. It makes total sense to me to be able to have, you know, first floor, perhaps, commercial buildings that provide revenue to the city but also provide residential opportunities for the very low income to also those at moderate or, you know, market rate homes, right? Because I do believe that we do have to have a blend of homes, you know, based on what you've showed us. You know, the city is certainly going in the right direction for the low and the low, very low markets, housing development, which is great. You know, one of my concerns is, you know, right now in the last census track, last census reports, you know, we have about 4.19 people, individuals living per household. Let's please keep that in mind as we move, you know, as we look towards, you know, other single-family homes and so forth. Because again, I think Councilmember Garcia mentioned it is, you know, the, the quality of life aspects that sometimes we may overlook, but it becomes a big issue for those people that live in those communities and neighborhoods as we move forward. Because again, I certainly have had the, the conversations of people going, hey, there's no parking for myself to even, you know, to put my own car in my, you know, besides, you know, their driveway. It's not only them, their wife, and their two children that all have, that all are driving in cars. That becomes an issue for that. So those are my comments on that side. The other question I was asked is, what's the challenge, you know, considering that, you know, again, over the next couple of years, how is it or what's a process in which, you know, we can quickly develop, you know, these close to 2,000-plus units or homes within a very built-out city? You know, how do we, you know, with, with CRA that's gone, you know, it's very difficult to use eminent domain. So if you can just bring back to us some strategies as to how we could, you know, make the underutilized locations more efficient, that would be helpful for, at least for myself as we move forward. Because again, you know, we live in a very built-out city. It's very hard for us to go anywhere except vertical. That's very costly, of course, as you know. But, you know, again, depending on what type of market that we're doing, we can allocate money towards that to help offset the cost for the developers for, you know, the low-income, low, moderate and so forth type of housing. And even perhaps looking at what that might look like for market-rate folks. So those are my comments. Appreciate that.
Sure. And to respond a little bit to the last question about what we can do to, so without the, without redevelopment, the city is limited in its ability to directly support through financial means a lot of housing production. It's true. We do have sources through CDBG and Home and the CARES Act to, to help support some. The home funds can help with rehabilitation, which then we can use to, to preserve units. But those funds are certainly limited and nothing like what we had with redevelopment. So it, it has fallen now a lot on, if you have an in-lug fee for affordable housing, those funds can help support it. So if the city does adopt an inclusionary policy and, and that has a, an in-lug fee option to it, that is a funding source that, that can help move that forward. The, but it really does start to fall down to incentives that the city can provide. And some of that is clarity of development process. I think with an update to the downtown-specific plan, that'll be a great step forward to have that environmental done to, to allow projects to move through quickly and easily and really making some of those connections happen and then just further incentivizing it. The state density bonus ordinance was amended again this year to, to provide additional incentives, which will likely help move that along, too. But again, it does, it fall a lot now to incentives rather than actual direct aid. It's also important to make sure that those areas that score really well for tax credit financing are known by the city. So we'll be looking at that as part of our assessment of sites because those key sites that could score really well and thus receive tax credit funding, the city might want to look at and then try to bring in developers and the right parties to talk, to, to make, to see if they can make any developments move along.
Mr. Mayor, this is Commissioner Sines. Do you mind if I ask a few questions?
No, go ahead, by all means.
Thank you. So a couple of, a couple of points. I, I know that I, I, Mayor Estrada, Councilmember Garcia, and the majority of the respondents at the survey brought up the issue of not, or trying to, at best possible, maintain the, the integrity of, of single-family neighborhoods. But we do see that ADUs, at least from the presentation, the ADUs are something that our, our communities is interested in. I see in statistics that in California alone, permits have been pulled threefold from 2016 to 2019. So we see that ADUs are in our future. We see that they're popular in our community. So how, how, so I understand the sentiments and I understand not wanting to impact our, our neighborhoods. But it's inevitable in a sense because ADUs are going to bring additional people. It's the fastest and cheapest way of bringing additional inventory into our communities. So what can we do to mitigate the, the effects on, on, on our communities through, through this plan? Or is this something that has to be addressed through development standards?
Good question. Yes. So because so much of that is regulated at the state level, there is, you know, there's little that the city can do to, to limit those, those ADUs. Certainly every property is allowed to have a, an ADU and a junior ADU. There are some things that the city can look at for making sure that some of those impacts could be lessened if there's certain allowances through development standard updates. Like if it is a two-story ADU, if it needs a little bit more setbacks and some of those parameters that we can put into place in the development standards, if we see that those are issues that are coming up and need to be addressed. And from kind of a larger perspective, the, the impact generally comes out in, in traffic and parking. So that does become a, a larger discussion about parking in general. And, you know, are there, is there a, a feeling that people would be okay with parking districts and not, you know, having a certain amount of parking allowed on a street? Those, so those become like a lot of parking questions that result about that. And then also some modifications that are allowed within state law to the, to the ADU ordinances.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you for your, for your answers. I also have another question. It's actually in regards, I, I, I share Councilmember Hernandez's feelings towards kind of encouraging high-density mixed-use. I guess, I want to call it development, but just bringing that type of use into, into our downtown and eventually kind of, I think organically would spread. I, I do think that, I think that we have to kind of place it in strategic points and allow, I guess, that to serve as like a catalyst for a social and economic development. And so we see that these certain points are doing well. And then naturally, things are going to get better and we'll see more development growing through. But I also like, think that it's like new development isn't necessarily growing through. But I also like, think that it's like new development isn't necessarily or new buildings aren't necessarily always necessary. I think that we have several great buildings in our downtown that can be repurposed to, to serve as possible housing. And we kind of saw that there's a development on the corner of, of Baldwin, Baldwin Park Boulevard and Ramona where the warehouse shoes, warehouse shoe sale building was converted to, to like a Starbucks and some other uses. So is there a way through this plan to encourage the repurposing of what was previously commercial or office buildings into residential uses?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we can certainly have a policy that, that looks at ways to help support that adaptive reuse. And again, this largely falls into incentives. So where we can allow for modifications to either the building code or to the, to the zoning code about pretend, you know, maybe it's parking. So these are probably, you know, not able to, to meet the parking standards. So to have adaptive reuse standards added as, as an implementation action of the, of the housing element is a possibility.
Well, thank you very much for your answers.
Thank you, Genevieve. And just to add to that, Chairman Sands, we're, we're looking at that right now in the current specific plan update with respect to adaptive reuse. So we're currently, the, the plan is in its draft. We're excited to be getting that draft in the coming months and the coming shortly about a month or two. But we are definitely considering that as we, we look at existing buildings in the downtown.
Perfect. Thank you, Ron. Thank you all for all the great work.
Great. And we have a couple of comments in the chat if you'd like me to, to read those out and, and address those as well. We have a comment from Helen H. Is it possible to bring in lease-to-own programs or more first-time homebuyer incentives and down payment assistance? And this is, this is again, a tricky one with the loss of redevelopment and just shrinking funding sources. The ability of many cities, especially in the San Gabriel Valley and other expensive areas to act, to support homebuyer assistance has been limited. Habitat for Humanity is a great resource to team with to help support more affordable homeownership in a community. There are also, there are some countywide programs that can help support it, the mortgage certificate, the MCC mortgage certificate, something, which, which can help support that. There's some countywide funding pools to draw from and we can do some of the, the gathering of that information and make that better available to local, local residents through the city's website. That might be a, a resource. And also encouraging lease-to-own programs. I think that's a great idea. So we can look at some of that, that in the housing element as well. The city, let's see, Brittany Irvin also had a question. And Helen responded, thank you. Yes, those responses would be appreciated by our residents. Brittany Irvin comments, how will the city plan to fulfill assisted living needs? Does the city have arena unit requirement specifically for assisted living or senior living? This is a great question. The RENA specifically doesn't include those types of group housing. Now, we know that assisted living is a very large, growing need and that type of development is kind of booming. But largely at a, a kind of a luxury level too. So, but we do know that there's a lot of need for assisted living facilities at all different income levels. That's not addressed in the housing element RENA itself, that those units are not addressed. But what's, what does come up is, is how are those allowed and facilitated in, in any particular jurisdiction? So it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a tricky one of, you know, does it comply with density? Or do you, you know, it can come, it sometimes hits hurdles because it does become more dense than a regular density limit would allow. So that's something that we can look at as well as to make sure that the process to develop new assisted living in town is clear and straightforward. So generally that's done with regulating based on FAR instead of density units to make sure that it can do kind of what it's intended to do. We have a comment from Catherine Begin. Mr. Mayor, are we doing public comments out loud right now? Or would you like to wait until the end for those?
Um, I'm not entirely sure. What's, what's the best, what do you guys think is the best option? We can do either or, whatever you think is easier.
Either one's fine. Let's see, maybe Roxanne, would you mind asking Catherine to unmute herself if she'd like? Or if she'd like to make a comment, please do unmute yourself. And Roxanne, can you give her the ability to do that?
Mark, if you could please unmute Catherine Begin, please.
Yeah, she can talk now.
Okay, Catherine, feel free to provide your comments.
Or if you were just saying hi in the comments, that's fine too. I'm glad you're here.
Catherine, please unmute yourself, please.
Mr. Mayor, while we wait for Catherine, do you mind if I ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead. And then I'll go after you. I have another question too.
All right. Thank you very much. So I, I do have a question in regards to the environmental justice component of, of the report. So naturally, I, I know that, I think we've already identified that the city of Baldwin Park doesn't have a lot of open space for new development and rather it's, we're going to be more geared toward re, redeveloping underutilized sites. But my question in regards to environmental justice, does, does RENA or anything, any state law protect the encroachment of like parks and other open community green spaces from redevelopment? I, I just, I asked that because like parks seem to be our only open, open spaces left. And so what does, does state law, is there anything in place that would protect those spaces for our community?
It's interesting. I'm trying to think how that would relate. There's nothing in housing element law that directly relates to that. The city's general plan does have an open space and conservation element that kind of lays out those policies and really gives that direction. Those that are owned by the city, I think are pretty safe and going to be retained in that way. But I think there can also be, you know, in potential future policies and, and ideas about trying to encourage the use, you know, the creation of more open spaces and usable spaces, usable green spaces in kind of found places. A lot of urban communities that need to find spaces either in, you know, the parkway or in rooftop gardens or other kinds of ways to really increase that or provide better access. You've got a great little wilderness park that, you know, could use some, some facilitation in getting people to it and to use it and continue to enjoy it. So I think there's some, I think there's some policies that, that the city can look at to enhance, enhance parks. But there's nothing in housing element law particularly that helps to guide that.
Okay. Well, thank you. But then, okay, I guess on the flip side, is there anything that we can incorporate into, into, I guess, our housing plan that would, that highly encouraged, well, number one, sustainable building, but maybe secondly incorporating like biophilic designs into the structures so that mixed-use, high-density developments maybe incorporate natural elements that, that serve as their own like green spaces within, within that, that development?
Sure. Yeah. So that's something that we can add as a policy in the housing element to, you know, really figure out if there's any incentives that we could provide to, to help those kinds of developments move forward.
Perfect. Thank you.
Right. And I think, I think Chair Science kind of touched on a topic that I wasn't going to touch about, which is open space, right? So I, I'm not sure if it's possible or not, but should, should we be looking at potential, you know, kind of requirements to make sure that the new developers don't just densify the city, but they do their portion and, and, you know, providing a reasonable space, a reasonable open space for their, for their, for their residents.
Sure. And so the, the open space standards that exist, I think they'll, that'll be looked at also in the downtown specific plan. But the city's existing open space standards that require a certain amount of onsite private or, or common open space is intended to exactly address that concern.
Yeah. And then so should we be, I think some, I think that somebody mentioned like there's a development that's recent and like the space there is practically like, you know, too small or something. So is that something that we should be looking at updating, you know, taking into consideration? I think you mentioned like rooftop green space. And I think, you know, with new developments and, you know, the modern architecture might be possible, right? So, you know, somebody, so it's not a matter of, you know, we're already part poor. And then, so that means that our residents are already lacking ability to, to open space and green space. And then we're adding more residents. And now we're just increasing the count. And then by, by all means, you know, we look at the statistics, it's going to look worse on us.
Yeah. So with the, the housing element law, we'll, we'll be looking at open space standards. We kind of look at it both ways. We're looking at it from the, the perspective of sometimes open space standards are too much and they can impede development from happening or they're too prescriptive of everybody has to have a balcony. You know, everybody has to have private open space rather than, you know, letting the developer have some flexibility to say, you know, we're going to create a really great common space that is more usable. It has a playground, all of these kinds of things that, you know, we can look at that to see two things. One, that it's actually usable open space that we're requiring and that it has the flexibility to provide the types of open space that the community is looking for. So it's kind of looking at it from both ends.
Great. And then I guess kind of touching on that topic, but kind of getting away from it. You know, one of the other points is, you know, as, as we mentioned, there's a, there's a, you know, four or five, you know, family members living in one household, they're, you know, they're, they're, you know, there's not enough space for them. And so sometimes as we build housing, it's either, you know, not in their, in their means, in their income means. Or it's just the way it's, it's funded that doesn't allow them to actually go for it. So again, you know, we, we add more residents and then, and then instead of kind of easing that, that density problem in, in certain neighborhoods, we're, we're making it worse, right? Because we've added more residents to the potential houses that the current residents could have gotten. So, and I know that's difficult, right? Depending on the funds that we use, whether the federal funds, HUD funds, whatever funds. I know that we have to go through a certain process. So is there anything, you know, is there any, any way to kind of combat that or, or, you know, get around that where, you know, we can try to build but also prioritize the people that live here so that, you know, that new housing and that, that new space does help those residents that are currently, you know, living bunched up.
Yeah, I think, I think what you're referring to is, I think it's called local preference. So again, in the to, to try and encourage developers to look locally first for their, you know, if it's, if it's homeownership to, to really advertise it to, to the local community. If it's for rentals to prioritize, if you're coming from within Baldwin Park and having a way to do that.
Okay.
Thank you, Genevieve. I just wanted to add one point to the mayor's question on, on the city being part poor. So there's a, there is a thing, a development impact fee based on projects that come to the city for residential. There's a fee called a Quimby fee. So essentially those fees are, those in lieu fees are paid into a fund for the city to use for future park space. I can tell you that the city is actively pursuing grants and has attained grants. For example, to connect the Walnut Creek Park that Genevieve mentioned with the flood control channels. So you have bicycle pedestrian trails that link these parks together. But I just wanted to mention that, that parking loop fee that the city does take advantage of in enhancing park space within the city.
Yeah. And, and don't worry, Ron, I, I became aware of it and I'm already, I'm already asking Ben and Shannon. So we're all, we're all in the same circle here.
And I think, I think we might have Catherine off of mute. Catherine, are you available to make your comment?
Yes, I am.
Great, thanks.
So I, I'm Catherine's husband and I'm just using her computer, but I, I am, I am a developer and I can tell you firsthand, some of the problems that I believe are a major impact on the cities that keep development from happening is that small projects like five and eight and 10-unit developments, they will not get built any longer. And the reason why is because they have to go through the same process as a 50 or 75-unit project, but there's no volume in it. So the small projects, if there was a way of, of, of fast-tracking them for a certain size or something, I think you would see a lot of improvement. I've been building for 30 years. I started out building small stuff and I'm, and I don't even look at a project nowadays unless it's at least 30 units or larger because there's no money in them. If you had five, six-unit projects or something like that, you'll never get nothing done. It'll take you so long to get all these projects passed and there's just no volume in them because you can't get them done in a timely fashion. It takes years to get stuff passed these days and I think that you're going to see a real problem unless cities start doing something about this. Red tape keeps getting more and more and more all the time and it slows projects down. So the only way you can make up for that is the project has to be large enough so there's actually some profit in it for the developer or the investors down the road. And these small projects can't afford to take that much time. So those are just my thoughts. I thought would help you guys out a little bit and and the fact that it just takes too long to get to get approval for things these days. There's just too much red tape. You have to figure out how to shred the red tape. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for your comment.
Sure.
I'm actually, I'm actually grateful that, that, I didn't, I didn't catch his name, Catherine's husband.
John, John Begin.
Don, that John made that comment, right? Because that's, that's, that's been one of my questions, right? You know, all we ever see now is either it's, it's all high density. And I, and I think that, and I've wondered why we haven't met in the middle and tried to build smaller, you know, smaller complexes or, you know, apartment buildings like in the past and where it's, you know, 10, 12 units or something. So I mean, that's, I, I think you brought up a good point and I, and I think that, that's something to look into, right? You know, we can build smaller, not so dense. I think a lot of the community would appreciate that, especially because I mean, down the main streets, I think the lots are pretty big and they could probably, you know, be worth looking into or considering that type of project.
A good point. Just to add to that, just so, so that way, just to give you some context, the city does process, we've processed and approved several projects that are smaller in size between, currently in our office right now, we have four-unit development, a six-unit development and also a set, a six-unit development. All townhomes of, of those projects, I have a five-unit proposed apartment. So I haven't seen an apartment development, which I think we're going to be seeing a lot of, especially with this housing situation. But they are, they do come to the city. They're usually not as, they, they don't come with the, the amount of attention that you would with the larger project. Usually you, you, you see the, the larger 50-unit project size, but we do get them, we do get them processed within the city.
Great. So is that something that we should be looking into and considering as we, you know, as we update the housing element and, you know, kind of get a broad range of, of, of building types, right?
Yeah, I, I think sometimes it's called the, the missing middle. The kind of in-between, you know, smaller apartment buildings, cottages, those kinds of missing middle that can somehow, sometimes be more affordable by design because they're a little smaller to really target like a moderate income level household too in, in new housing. So those are, those are great opportunities.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you. Well, I do want to support what our planning director has mentioned about more of these subdivision type of projects. I think Baldwin Park has supported this type of development and the planning commission can probably speak to this even more than I could because they're probably, you know, reviewing these projects. But that, you know, that kind of goes back to in this plan and in this housing element, you know, when we do you know, when we do subdivide a large lot in our city and it could become more of a single family um, type of development, but it still adds the density. So, you know, so our city has very large lots and um, many of them have have been subdivided. Um, but some of them, you know, are still one home per like, more recently, I was talking with somebody about, I think, a thirteen thousand square foot lot. So something to to look at in this plan again is, um, the integrity of single family neighborhoods. And, you know, when we, when we do these smaller, like, I guess, you know, middle of the road projects, they may look and feel a little bit more like single family, um, but they still add the density. They still add, you know, a greater amount of of um, households, um, traffic and, um, you know, cars. So I definitely agree the hat, you know, we we need to provide housing in our community. Um, and we need to, you know, stay very current with providing that housing in different, um, different ways. And I I served on the planning commission years ago, so, you know, I approved many of these subdivisions. I think they were PUDs at that time. But I'm just, you know, I I'm all in favor of development and creating housing, I guess. If we can look in this housing element at, again, how do we, you know, maintain, how do we preserve the integrity of our single family neighborhoods? Um, especially where there are large lots that are being subdivided for those middle of the road type of projects. And I don't even know, you know, I don't even know if that can really be done because if somebody divides, let's say, a thirteen thousand uh, square foot lot and um creates two single family homes out of that, then, you know, I I'm not really sure how we would regulate that and how we could really encourage, you know, the best uh, development for the neighborhood. But it's just something to consider because our city does have have those type of lots still. And in the past, if you go down some of our main corridors, I don't know if you've been able to drive our city, but let's say along Fuente Avenue, where these very large lots were subdivided and they have it, they have a shared driveway. And, you know, out of one lot that was large, let's say like three or four homes were created. And so that changed the the, you know, single family feel of that neighborhood. And they did it by right, you know, they did it within what was allowed by the city. So I know I'm probably sounding anti-developer, which I'm not, I've actually worked for a development company. So I'm very much in favor of development. I just, I guess what I would like us to see is, you know, just that smart development and make sure that the um, integrity of our neighborhoods is preserved. And whether it's a multifamily neighborhood, you know, and bringing in more multifamily and, you know, that's wonderful as long as the impacts, um, you know, are measured and mitigated and all of that. Uh, but the same applies, you know, especially I think for our single family residential neighborhoods. So that leads me to my next question and it's for the consultant, but I have a question for Ron. My first question is, what is a state law say about ADUs and parking for ADUs?
That very good question, uh, Councilmember Garcia. So just to give you a little background, I don't wanna get delve into this, uh, uh, but the council and the planning commission are gonna be considering this on the next uh, couple months. Right now, um, uh, as it stands, I have a draft ADU amendment amended ordinance with HCD uh, for their approval to be in compliance with the uh, with the state requirements for ADUs. I will say that, um, and we'll get into this in our, in our uh, as we present the ordinance of the planning commission and the council, the state and Genevieve can can confirm this. The state has made it very, very, very difficult. I can't stress how difficult the state uh, has made it for cities to um to require parking. They've made it very difficult. So based on the city of Baldwin Park's geography and its location to transit, the state, the city cannot require with the building or conversion of a of a garage, uh, required parking. So, um, one thing we we uh noted in this, uh, this the state requirements that came out last year, essentially made it very difficult to pro, even prohibit cities from prohibiting ADUs. Uh, so there were cities that were prohibiting in certain areas. Essentially, this came down and said, cities can no longer make it difficult or prohibit areas of the city, um, uh, to to prohibit ADUs. One interesting thing, I'll just leave you a little piece, um, uh, is in our, in our current ordinance that the city adopted, the ADU ordinance, there were three things that the city adopted to prohibit ADUs in certain areas of the city. The state pretty much said, you cannot do that anymore. So, uh, we have a draft before the, before HCD right now that they're looking at to make sure that it's in compliant. But unfortunately, uh, not only Baldwin Park, but cities across California are very, very, very limited as to what they can do, uh, in regulating ADUs within their own boundaries. I hope that answers your question, I, uh, but you asked a very good question. But we'll be getting into that as we move forward with the, uh, an amended ordinance, uh, ADU ordinance, uh, to the city.
Okay, yeah, I know you did answer my question, thank you. Um, and yeah, I think I'm in favor of having ADUs. I I know that in our community, you have several generations, you know, in one, under one roof. And, um, it's a cultural thing, but it could also be an economic thing. And then, you know, with adding, uh, you know, an ADU, then that just adds more. Like we were saying, you know, traffic and and cars. And so I'm all in favor of providing that opportunity for, you know, for people that are looking for housing and even for property owners. But I was just wondering if if there was a regulation, you know, that would be triggered with regard to parking. So that answers my question, thank you. And I'm glad that it's gonna, yeah, I'm glad it's gonna come, um, to the planning commission and I guess to the council, right? For uh, further review and discussion and adoption.
Yes, correct, one last comment I wanted, on one comment that you made. One thing you made, uh, this overall theme of protecting single family residential neighborhoods. What's been coming down from the state is essentially gonna limit, um, SB fifty, it was a Weiner bill that came down, which essentially would do away with all single family residential zoning. So by right, uh, what's coming down from the state is saying, any single family home by right, you can put four units on it. In addition to ADUs and junior accessory dwelling units. So you can see the stuff that's coming down from the state as far as, uh, and densifying your single family residential uh, neighborhoods and there's really only so much that we can do to really limit that based on what's coming down from the state when they don't give any leeway uh, as to what they can and uh, regulate within its own jurisdiction.
Mm hmm, well, I I definitely want, you know, thank you for being on top of that policy and I definitely want to hear more about it as we move forward. And I I see that the writing is on the wall and I see the direction that we're going in, um, you know, for many years now. But I have a really hard time believing that more affluent communities are gonna be, you know, doing kind of following these rules, uh, because I I, what I don't want to see is, I I don't want to see Baldwin Park, you know, sometimes we drive through cities and we're like, why doesn't Baldwin Park have this? Or why do they have this, you know, uh, why does Baldwin Park have these, you know, this density and, you know, other cities don't? So, you know, we can just keep an eye on the policy, follow it, comply, but also just keep in mind that, you know, it is important to our residents and to our community to, and I've heard this over many years, you know, to to do our best to to try and preserve that single family neighborhood feel. Where, you know, where it's multifamily commercial and where it lends itself even for transitional, then absolutely we should be looking at those sites for redevelopment, um, you know, more density. And and I've been a strong advocate for that in our transit oriented district, um, over many years. So I get that. But something that I have heard and I think even our, our, you know, the consultants this evening, the information that they presented is that in serving our our community and our residents, that it's important for them to, you know, have minimal impact to our our single family neighbor, um, neighborhoods. So that being said, yeah, let's, let's comply with state law. Let's, you know, um, monitor track, but let's also advocate in the best interest of our community. And like I said, you know, I have a hard time believing that more affluent communities, like, um, you know, some of our neighboring cities, um, especially going west, will, you know, will just kind of fall into line without any pushback. So anyway, that's just, those are my thoughts. And that's just me advocating for, you know, the community that I've talked with and where, you know, they have, they have expressed, they want to maintain the integrity. They want to minimize the impact to single family neighborhoods through traffic and and parking. And, you know, like I said, the socioeconomics of our community already are are such that there are three generations living in one, um, neighborhood. And it could, like I said, it could be very cultural, but, um, then you add ADUs and, you know, to the mix and, um, without any other requirements. And then you add, you know, some of the other, um, policies that are coming down that are gonna, you know, really change that. And so as long as we're doing everything we can to promote housing, to create housing for our, um, you know, our community in a smart way, in a regulated way and, uh, in a way that that is in the best interest of our community. You know, and that that means something different, like I've already pointed out, it means something different for the commercial transit oriented district, um, you know, those types of corridors and versus our our R one neighborhoods.
Great, thanks, we have a couple of comments in the chat that I'd like to get to, um, as well. Um, this is a a comment from Eurico Rus- Rusispara. I probably said that wrong. The the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments conducted a stakeholder input process that highlighted some of the challenges around housing development, which are now being addressed with the support of the Regional Housing Trust Fund, of which Baldwin Park is a part. Perhaps this work can cross-reference with that information for a different, additional reference and resource. We will absolutely do that and thank you for pointing out that resource. It is a new resource for the San Gabriel Valley region of the Regional Housing Trust Fund, um, and Baldwin Park is participating in that. Um, so we will make sure that that's also included and see what else, um, you know, how how the city can really maximize the the use of that trust fund as well. Um, another comment from John Begin. Parking accounts for twenty-five to thirty-five percent of the developable area. But if you don't have parking, most developments will fail. Most people in Southern California need a vehicle to work, take children to school and just survive. Going up over three stories is the only way, but you are going to change the feel of your city, which I personally don't think you should accept unless in a few specific areas.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I'd like to ask just the question, a quick one.
Yeah, I I don't know who that was, but yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I I saw that you 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 had done a survey. Hundred and ten, um, people replied back and that you said that you were gonna be doing another survey. Is it, is it gonna be the same survey again, looking for more feedback? Or is it gonna be a different survey imploring, let's say, different types of questions um, about what our community is looking at?
Great, thanks for the question. So the next survey is actually intended to be tailored, uh, to environmental justice. So that's on a separate topic, um, that is the part of the project that we're we're updating. The housing element and that environmental justice piece. We didn't, um, address that in the first survey because we felt like it would be more important to have a full survey devoted to that topic. So that will be coming out in the next couple of months.
Excellent, and and is there a way that we can like, you know, try to work to get more input? You know, because a hundred and ten for a a city of a populace of over sixty thousand, easy. It just seems kind of a little bit minimal, you know? Obviously, we did see, I mean, the survey showed in certain areas, there's a a higher percentage, but it just didn't seem like it gave it all the due diligence considering demographics that we have living here within our city, you know? And I think, obviously, I know it's kind of difficult sometimes to get, um, a lot of participants, but it would be nice to get, uh, quite a bit more feedback, I feel, just because, you know, these are the people that live in our city, the the people that rent, the people that own, the people that have lived here for a long time or all their life.
Absolutely, yeah, that's a really good point. And for, for just a little bit of context too, we also did have a community workshop where we had, I'm, I can't remember how many we had, folks we had who turned up to that meeting, but I think it was about ten, Ron?
Yeah. About ten or twelve.
And so, um, you know, oftentimes back before COVID, we would have just limited it to that one meeting. In order to try, this is one thing that has come out, is the ability to actually replicate some of those meetings in a survey format and reach more people. We're getting, you know, where an in-person community workshop may would, you know, maybe had fifteen people at it. Now we're getting a hundred plus with a survey too. So that is one thing that is better than was done in the past at least, which is, which is good news. But I do see your point about, especially for the envi- environmental justice component. The Attorney General is really looking carefully at cities when they do their environmental justice work to make sure that the needs of folks who are living in the disadvantaged communities are really addressed and that folks are engaged. So we're looking at ways to try and increase that effort. We might look at incentivizing, you know, with a a drawing for a winner. If, you know, if you fill in, if you fill out the survey, everybody goes into a drawing for, um, you know, maybe a local restaurant or something that we can support local restaurants too. So something like that to incentivize those kinds of things tends to go a long way to try and turn up the volume on on trying to get participation. We do know it's just, um, it's hard to get participation, people are busy. So whatever we can do to try and to try and turn up that volume, we'll we'll do.
Excellent, thank you.
And, um, a note from Laura Santos, that Baldwin Park has great community organizers, um, which is a really good point. We will definitely be working with, um, community organizers to try and make sure that they're participating. We had some great input at the first workshop as well um, and asked them to distribute the survey link widely to their networks to try and get that to happen. And that is absolutely the the networks that are so valuable and so fantastic and in being able to actually reach out to everybody that they know because they have such a big network.
Great, and I I want to second that, I think, you know, we need, we do need a lot more, uh, input on these things. I know sometimes I think everybody does a public hearing and it's always, so by all means, like, you know, we can make it not just at certain points, I think sometimes it's like during lunch hours, like, you know, the average person is at work, you know, somewhere far away. So by all means, making sure that people are aware of this, you know, through social media. And and so that they can respond at any, at any given time of the day. Uh, and then, of course, the surveys may be a little bit more easy. I I filled it out and it was a little bit long and a lot of, a lot of questions. I'm not gonna lie, I felt like I was being a little like, I was being swayed to vote, to build downtown. I don't know who wrote the survey, but, you know, of course, we want to make sure that that people are, you know, have options and that they're, that they're being a being able to put in comments and whatnot. I know we have a, I mean, housing by all means is a is a big, uh, concern for everybody and it's and it's tricky, right? Because we have to please everybody. So that way people have options and they're able to really kind of express themselves a little bit more freely on the the topic.
Mayor, I have a question.
Uh, yes, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Uh, I I just want to clear, um, first, if we can have that PowerPoint presentation so I can walk over it more thoroughly. And was there a section on there with concerns about high traffic areas? And possibly the age areas that we would do high density? Was there a concern about that? And also, um, I was, when you were speaking about ADUs, I I personally think it's a great idea to have ADUs. Do we have any type of program to help with those that would have, are interested in that? Financially help them?
Good question, Mayor Protem, to answer your question on the ADU. That's gonna be coming forward, our Measure H funds. That's gonna be coming forward. Our Measure H funds is gonna be studying how the city can provide. And incentivized to homeowners. To, to build an ADU, particular again with Measure H. It's tied to providing incentives for a family who would be able to house someone who's experiencing homelessness. So Measure H, which is gonna be coming before you. Soon for your consideration and approval to study that, that, that issue, that. That specific thing and trying to create incentive, incentives for people to, to build ADUs. So we're gonna be looking at that. So you, you definitely hit it on the nail.
And so these, these ADUs, the whole purpose, of course, it's to, to help. With the availability of more housing, but it's going to be affordable, correct? Is there going to be a gap on how much they will be charging for, for rent? Or how is that going to work to make sure the, the ADUs are beneficial for those that are low income?
Yeah, that's something that we can look at right now. The ADUs are not being tied to a specific. Income level. Right now, as the state requires, you can build an ADU on single family, multifamily, mixed use. And it's not, not tied to. A specific income. I will say, maybe Ben, if you can chime in a little bit. There is an opportunity to possibly use some home funds. If, for example, a affordable housing developer like Habitat for Humanity were to build an ADU. And they were to receive some assistance from the city, they could use the development of that ADU to house someone. House a family at an affordable income.
Right. Because just like I, I am, I'm in agreement with the ADUs. Because there is a lot of lots, large lots that, that they can accommodate another home. But my concern, there's also concern because then I feel that they may take advantage and overcharge. And then that wouldn't help anybody that is low income. If there's not going to be a regulation on how much they could charge, because if it's going to be considered a new construction. We may not be able to have any rental benefits for, for the person renting that ADU. So if we can look into what that's going to look like and if it will actually benefit. The low income community to build the ADUs, or if there's something we can do to make sure that it does stay affordable. And I like that about the Habitat for Humanity for them to actually build the ADU. I think that would be a good idea as well.
Yes, for the ADUs, that's one of the things when, when ADUs first came down from the state. When they were really promoting ADUs back in twenty sixteen. The, the emphasis there was to open up the opportunity to, to build as much housing as possible. And hopefully that'll bring down the price of, of, of housing. What we've seen, I, I think they had, the state had good intentions, but I think what we have been seeing is. Property owners taking advantage of the opportunity to add another unit, a rental unit on their property. And not for affordable purposes, but for obviously an opportunity, an investment opportunity. But there really isn't anything that the state that we can do to require. That the units that come through the city that are ADUs have to be to a specific income level.
Okay, so maybe that's something to look into to see what that whole policy will look like once it is applied to everybody.
I, I, I kind of want to comment on Mayor Protem's comments. I think she brought up a good point about ADUs, right? You know, we don't really seem to have any power over them or any sort of regulation, so it, it could exacerbate the problem in a way. But in a way, I know that we, we fear density and whatnot in certain areas. But at the same time, you know, some of these families might have, you know, they're, they're, they're the second generation and they build that ADU. That second generation might just pass over to that ADU and the population stays the same in those areas. I do want to say, and I think Eurico might know more, I think, I want to see that there was some sort of effort that I saw where county or some sort of upper program. Might help build the ADU if they can use it a certain way for a couple of years. And I'm not, I'm not so sure if any of you know, or maybe Eurico knows, but I think that might help answer.
Hi, Mayor. Am I unmuted?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Perfect. There are certainly different models around throughout the county that support ADU incentives. And that is actually an effort that we will be embarking on within the land use study and overall ADU processes. To look at what those best practices are across different cities and what could align with our. Housing, you know, our housing goals. So we would definitely be exploring some of those. Some of the most popular ones that we've heard that have created some success around their ADU conversions. Is pairing up the planning process with the architectural process as well as any. Loans that could be utilized specifically to help some of those low income households. So some cities are kind of combining those three efforts as they sometimes could come up as a challenge. Right? So if it's, if it's a family who wants to build an ADU in their backyard. They may not know how to navigate through these different channels and different processes. That are, that are quite challenging for, for, you know, the regular homeowner or landlord. So those are some of the types of programs that we've been exposed to. There are several across the county. But our, our ADU ordinance and our ADU study will be looking into those further. And also to look at any best practices around incentives. The, the Measure H effort is around, Ron is correct, it is around addressing homelessness. But it does not limit us to kind of look at what best practices are out there. And how, how those can be tailored or modeled to, to help our housing stock in the city of Baldwin Park. Another big topic around homeless prevention has been that specific prevention and diversion into homelessness. So that's also another area where we could tackle from the prevention side of how do we not only help people. Once they're experiencing homelessness, but how can we prevent that from actually happening when they're losing the rate of. Of, of families losing their units is, is so much higher. So yes, those are certainly additional resources that we, we, we can look into. And thank you for bringing, bringing that up.
Thank you, Eurico.
Thank you.
Ron, if I may?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, is there any thoughts or vision in regards to, you know, utilizing or leveraging also? You know, the phenomenon of what we'll call tiny, tiny homes or tiny house within, you know, within the plan?
A good question. We don't have anything in our, in our municipal code and that's something that we can further study. I know that we've had some inquiries, not a whole lot, but we've had some inquiries, but that's definitely something that we can look. In the, in the near future in adopting development standards to allow for that type of construction.
Thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Grito here again. Just quick question. So with the pandemic, obviously, you know, we're, we're, you know, it's, it's something that's gonna continue to be ongoing. And we don't know how long. And obviously, the plan is stretched out over so many years, you know, we set goals and all that. Do we, or is there something that's included or do we have anything that will, you know what I'm saying? If, let's say the pandemic for, it, it takes years for this to actually really go away. Does, and it, it affects, continues to affect certain things. Does, does, is there something written in the plan or anything like that? Extending it because of the pandemic or anything like that?
That's, yeah, that's an interesting question. We, we've heard it in a lot of places too. The state hasn't extended any timelines with regard to housing as it pertains to the pandemic. They haven't extended timelines to let people take longer to do things because everything's in turmoil. And they haven't made any adjustments to housing need projections. And, and we don't think that they will largely because it's legislated when they make those projections. And so that would have to come through legislation. So it's possible that the state legislature would write some legislation to say, you know what? Everything is different. Say, four years from now, let's look at everything again on a different. Cycle than what currently exists. That could happen, but, but probably not. I think what we see is, you know, I, we do have a process for annual reporting to the state. And to, to, the city has a process where every year, there's an annual report where the city looks at each and every implementation action. That they put in place and how, how well we've achieved that. And so, and that's always brought before city council for, for their review too, to make sure that the public's aware. And at that point, you know, you can make adjustments and, and think about other programs and policies that you could put in place to further goals if, if things aren't working.
Thank you.
I, I kind of want to go back to that, the tiny homes. One, I know that tiny homes have been kind of super popular. You know, housing shows have made them, you know, break ratings. So one of my concerns with tiny homes is that, you know, as, you know, as we see more and more dense housing and smaller spaces. And, you know, we're, I think for certain units, you know, we even cut the square footage. I think we did it for some apartments for like nine hundred to eight hundred. And we keep decreasing the size of, of housing and we allow prices to rise. I kind of worry that we're, we're giving into this idea that housing has to be this, this expensive thing. And now all you can afford is this tiny home and we might be lowering the standard of what we should be doing. So, you know, we can, we can consider, but I do think we should be considering kind of the implications or, you know, the, the, the cons against tiny homes. I know that they are, of course, popular and I know that a lot of people show support for them, but you know, there might be some negative implications that we're not considering.
I think to your point, the, where tiny homes do locate in higher density. So say a tiny home development would, went into an R3 or a higher density residential lot. You could actually be reducing the total density just because you're only going one story and maybe you would have gone three before. You may have actually been able to, to provide more efficient housing through another model that's not the tiny home. But in other places where, you know, it, it can function like a small light subdivision, but really encourage a smaller footprint. To help facilitate that feeling of, of the single family neighborhood. That's, that does become an option. We see in some cases that it can support affordability by design, but sometimes you're right. It just becomes the, the, like the TV model kind of, of looking at it.
Yeah, my concern, you know, so, you know, if somebody's already charging, you know, one thousand and two thousand dollars for, for a small condominium. And then, you know, what are they gonna charge for that tiny home? And then depending on what they charge for that tiny home, well, then the person with the actual, you know, apartment might say, well, if they're charging this much for the tiny home. Then I'm gonna start charging this much for the apartment. So that, that's my concern, right? That we're kind of giving in and we're smaller and smaller spaces of living.
We, we do have a, a comment in the chat that I'd like to add as well from Laura Santos. She noticed or asked the question, is there really, is there a housing, housing shortage? Or is, or just inaccessibility because of bad distribution of income and wealth? I don't see any other comments in the chat that we missed. Any other?
I do have another question. My question is, as we're looking at the, the new goals and objectives in this housing element. Does it take into account what efforts we've already implemented or the city has already implemented? Does it take into account the existing density of certain areas? And, and does it compare, you know, our density per square miles to other cities? Does it, does it really take a historic look? This is what I'm asking. Or does it kind of start at a, at a, at a baseline, you know, a shared baseline? You know, based on like the state's goals?
It's, it's a little bit of both. So there is, there's a historic measure to it. We, we do look back at the last housing element every time to see, you know, each of those programs, is it still relevant? Are there changes that need to be made? So each of those programs are analyzed. We look, the state also requires us to consider those sites that we identified in the past. If they're still available, we need to further justify why they haven't developed. So there is, there is a significant amount of, of looking backward to make sure that what we've done in the past. You know, if it's on track, it is maintained in the housing element. And if it needs to be adjusted, it is adjusted. Now that said, we also have to update it for current demographics. Anything new that is, you know, new trends, new things that the city is, is doing. And pro, programs that, that are in place like Project Room, Home Key and the Measure H funds. And the opportunities that the city is pursuing through those mechanisms. And with regard to a measure of density, it's interesting because Baldwin Park's density in terms of. Units per acre may not be as high as some of the surrounding communities. But persons per acre, it probably is higher. So it's an interesting question. Because how we measure density depends on, on what, what factor we're using. And the way that the housing element looks at it is, is units per acre, not in, in how many people are in those, in those units. But we do take into account those concerns about potential overcrowding. And what are the needs of the community? Are there needs for, you know, larger units and, and that because of, of those existing. Conditions that have historically existed and continue to exist. And so it's a little bit of balance and we do have to look both at the history and the current setting.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that because let's say there's like a baseline goal of, by the state of bringing like. Ten thousand additional housing units, you know, per city. I'm just throwing the number out there and over ten years. You know, that would not take into account like where we, where our starting point. So it does sound like the history is taken into account, the existing density is taken into account, right? As we're meeting the state's goals. That was a question for the consultants.
Could you repeat that one more time?
So again, I was saying, I was making a statement that I'm glad that we do take the, you know, the historical. Kind of data information into account as we're planning in this housing element. To meet like the state goals of creating housing. And so what I was saying is that as like, let's say there was a state goal of bringing in X number of. Housing units over a ten-year period. That's where the historical perspective is important. Because if our city already begins with a higher density of units per acre. Then I would like that to be taken into consideration.
Gotcha. Okay. So I think I can address that. It's a, it's a little bit, this goes into the methodology of how SCAG allocates that arena. To each of the individual jurisdictions. And as we put into the, into the report, Baldwin Park did get a smaller number than some of the surrounding communities. You know, there's, there's some communities that got nineteen thousand units in a built-out community. Because they are a center of transit. So Baldwin Park got, the, the methodology works out to. Address that through, through transit and through where existing need exists. And where the city has already taken on additional affordable housing, because you have more affordable housing. Those cities didn't get quite as much. So the, the methodology does look at to that to some extent. We have one more comment from Laura Santos in the, in the chat field. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Garcia, did you have a response? I think you're on mute.
Oh, no, it's actually council member.
Council member, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I think I talked to you ten years ago when you were, when you were a commissioner. Sorry.
Oh, no, I was a council member back then too. That's okay. No, I was just, I was just saying that that's actually a good thing. I'm glad to hear that, you know, because the city has provided. Multifamily affordable housing. And I'm glad that that is being considered, like you say, in the methodology. Is there any way for us to look? Is there any way for us to look at some kind of comparative analysis of the surrounding cities just for our own information on that?
The, as far as the number of RENA or the, actually how it plays out with the methodology, both of those pieces of information are available through the SCAG website and we can get those to you. I can work with Ron to get to the, both the methodology and summary of, of what all the jurisdictions' renas are.
That would be great. Ron, can you provide that to us? Because I really do think it, it could help us understand, you know, really like deficits, but also where we, where we have actually progressed in comparison to, you know, other cities in the area. And I know that, that's not really what we're doing here with the housing element, but I think it'll also help us just gain perspective of the bigger picture.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I will say, just from being, my time here, Baldwin Park has definitely done a, has been a leader in, in taking on that responsibility in providing affordable housing in comparison to some other cities. So a lot of, some cities haven't built one unit of affordable, affordable unit in ten, fifteen, twenty years. So we've definitely done a good job of being a leader in, in the San Gabriel Valley and doing that. But absolutely, we'll get that information to you.
Thank you, Ron. Yeah, that would be really helpful in this conversation. As we, we look closely, you know, we delve into the subject of housing, not just for the housing element, but just in general. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to note Laura Santos' comment in the chat box, tiny homes might be better for transitional emergency housing while making arrangements for permanent housing, just to get people off the street right away, much better than shelters which lack privacy and security. And I'm just scrolling through the chat box to see if we missed any other comments from the public. And if there's anyone else in the public that would like to comment, if you'd like to raise your hand, please do that. Or type a, a comment in the chat field. Are there any other, other questions or comments from commissioners or council members? Okay, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor, I do not see any other comments in the chat field, so.
Great. Yeah, so I believe, I, I'm sure we've all answered our questions. I think we've already gone over. I don't know, any, any more questions? This is the time, right? Housing is important and you have any questions that you've had, now's a chance. If not, I believe we can move on.
I, I don't have any questions, but if we can, I don't know, maybe somehow get a hold of some sort of contact information so that if questions do arise, I don't know if there's a way that we can reach out in the future.
Yeah, by all means, I think that's a great idea. So I don't know if the presenters can maybe share their, their, their information with us, you know, through the chat or maybe they can give it to Ron and then Ron can forward it to all of us. I'm sure he has all of our emails.
Yep, absolutely. And you can always reach out to Ron and he can talk to us and we can, we can have any kind of communications that you desire. We'll, we'll make sure, we want the comments and we'll make sure that they're addressed in the housing element update process.
Yes.
And now, now that I know that Ron is, is, is a, is a, is playing a vital role in the housing, he's going to be on my speed dial, so. So, you know, we'll, we'll stay in touch, Ron. Okay, so I think at this point, public communication is closed. I, I believe so, right? Because we, we did it kind of simultaneously. Let me confirm just before I skip it. And I think we should be okay. So I believe at this point we can move to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second?
All second. Thank you, Ron. Thank you so much, Ron, for helping to spearhead these efforts.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Genevieve and Roxanne from MIG. Thank her for attending tonight.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.